Good morning, everybody. We're five o'clock. We'll call this evening's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and I did not see any additions necessary.
No, no.
Okay, all right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. We'll move into citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this evening, items not on the agenda? I see county employees ready to answer questions tonight. All right, we'll move on then to the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. And lastly, the approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Our 505 item is a approval of appraisal to purchase easement for highway purposes in Glendon. Highway engineer Dave Overbow. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. So this item is with relation to our 2018 project in Glendon. We're really lucky that we only have one parcel that we actually need to acquire along the entire mile. All the other parcels are just temporary construction easements so that we can taper back into the residential yards. This one here, being that it's federal aid, did require a full bone appraisal. So we hired Tinjum out of Detroit Lakes, and they did a kind of a before and after, kind of a taking style appraisal. The entire parcel that we need for this, the one parcel we need is 756 square feet, so it's not real big. The valuation was $1.60 a square foot, so it was rounded up to $1,225 for the one parcel, and it's just north of the railroad tracks on the west side of County Road 19.
All right, you're looking for approval of that appraisal?
Correct.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. We'll move into your item number two, which is approval of maintenance agreement with Becker County.
I got a call recently from a resident that he does a little, he leases some land and does a little hunting. It's out on the east side of Nest Lake. It's on our County Road 119. When I first started here 15 years ago, this roadway was overtaken by Nest Lake, so I think there was kind of a handshake agreement with Becker County to maintain what's about a, somewhere between a quarter and a half a mile or less. Becker County can come in off of their County Road 146, just do some minimal maintenance, gravel road maintenance, and then snow plowing kind of as needed. So I think this agreement through attrition of different people and different county engineers has kind of changed. And I got a call from a resident that said, "We do some hunting out there. Road's in tough shape, and very often it doesn't get plowed in the wintertime." So I worked with Becker County, and they kind of remembered the agreement, and we just thought we should put something together. So I put, I actually worked with Jenny, and she kind of, if you look at the maintenance agreement, it looks very similar to what we do with the townships for maintaining their roads. So she kind of worked with me. We put it together. We run it by Becker County, and they gave their agreement on it. I think the only change they had is she had on there that we would get billed quarterly, and they just want to bill us annually. So we'll just make that one change if it isn't already changed on your form.
Quarterly.
And it's very minimal maintenance. And I think the last time we were billed on it was back in 2014. We had a $1,634 bill that included some gravel road blading, and it also a little bit of gravel, too. So I just kind of talked to their engineer and said, "When you blade it, if it looks like it needs it, please hit it. If you guys are doing a little bit of graveling on there every so often, put a little gravel on ours, too," and it should be a good agreement. I just thought it'd be best to have something actually written down so, you know, years down the road, people don't forget. I don't forget if people leave, so just going to have it documented.
Is there cost in here, or?
I think it's going to be their, just their actual costs, what their hourly rates and their equipment rates are, it'd be similar to ours.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none, did you have?
Just a comment, but it, Mr. Chair, most of the township roads, I know this is a county road, but even the county roads over in Becker County, they only have one road rate. They normally contract that out, so I'm sure if they do this half mile or whatever, it's a contract rate, like you said. It's not their fee. It's what they'll pass through from the township.
Sure.
Not the township, but the person that surfaces, the contractors.
Yeah. Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same.
Just briefly.
Motion carried.
I just have a comment.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So at our MetroCog Executive Committee meeting this week, we've identified there's some additional 2018 federal funding dollars that haven't been allocated, that it would be an 80-20, 80 federal, 20 local match. And the MetroCogs looking for any additional projects that we could possibly do. Also, there are $2014 that we thought were gone, but apparently if we are able to prove that there's a project or a need, they would be eligible for that same federal-local split.
Okay.
And while I realize there's a 20 percent county, it would be our match, there's some significant dollars that if there's some projects you guys have identified, they wanted the entities to reach out to them. And I think they'll be reaching out to that technical committee.
Okay.
But just if you want to think if there's anything that we want to take advantage of that.
Maybe it's something we can use on our cost share up here on the signal on 15th Avenue or something.
Well, why don't you, is there somebody at MetroCog?
Yeah, Michael Maddox is the executive director interim right now.
You want to touch base with him, Dave?
Touch base with him, but from what I heard is there are not enough projects to even tap into that funding at this point with what's been spoken for, so.
Great, we'll take a look.
And there's too much money in that area.
Yeah, how does that feel?
And it's use it or it's gone, so type of a thing, so.
All right, thank you for that.
Yeah.
15th Avenue, for sure.
All right, I'll look and let you know.
All right, your crew got through the storm here.
Yeah, I think it went pretty well. Brian O'Brien, Dave, Dave, the head of the storm, let them all know, put them on call. We worked a little bit later one night, and we started at six the next day, so I never really heard about any hiccups or anything. I didn't really hear a lot of calls or get any calls myself.
All right, very good. Thank you, Dave. All right, our next item is the budget timeline discussion. I know at the previous meeting I'd asked this to be on the board last week, and then we moved it to this week, and I think primarily tonight what we want to do is to establish the number of meetings that we have left to go over this. We weren't going to do a lot of discussion on it tonight because we were going to wait till we got the feedback from our citizens tonight at this, at our truth and taxation meeting. So Brian, you, you know, we're looking at a timeline here, and we have three meetings after today. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. And because we had to do the agenda for next Tuesday, and you had expressed interest at the last meeting during reports, or you'd asked that this be on the agenda, and then we refined it to discussing the timeline. So we do have it on the Tuesday's board for discussion purposes, and then we will have to approve a budget for 2018, either 12th, 19th, or 26th is the final date. So I guess it's just on there today to make everybody aware that if they want to have some discussion next Tuesday, get your thoughts in order.
Okay, well, we'll plan on a lively discussion on Tuesday.
I have some things.
Yes.
So in talking with some constituents, the assessed values that went up, and you and I have talked a little bit about what our levy is currently at, just was curious in regards to fees that the county currently is assigning, and when this board had reviewed it, if it's been something that's set by statute or if it's locally set by us. And in my reflection as to what COLA increases have been over the past few years, obviously, I think it's important that whatever fees we assess would be something that would cover staff time.
Is this different?
No, that's for Jim.
Oh.
And so Brian emailed all the departments to have them kind of get back to us to see what fees they are signing and when we have looked at it. So I'd like to talk about this next Tuesday, so it's something that you can look over and digest. And I think that when the assessor's office came to us six months ago with a request to do a fee increase for something that hadn't really been increased for some time in terms of if staff runs somewhere, it's obviously costing them more money if we're not being consistent in what we're charging. So look over this in the next week, and then we'll talk about it.
All right. That'll be one of several things we'll probably talk about.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, Lori is here. Lori, you want to get approval on the election equipment grant?
Good afternoon. Okay, the state went ahead and they approved $7 million for election equipment to be granted to the counties. It's been quite a while since we got new election equipment, so we're about nearing the end of its life. And so we're going to apply for that. It's a maximum of $5,000 per precinct, but a minimum of 1,750, if every precinct in the state applied for it. So it just is based, based on how many people apply for it. But, so what I'm asking for is the board to approve the resolution that allows me to apply for the grant.
Very good. That would be Resolution 2017-47. That's the board's issues.
I'll move to approve the request.
I have a motion to move.
I'll second that. In fact, that was one of my things that I picked up at the AMC conference, that you've got till August of 2019 to do this.
I have to do this by December 15th.
Yeah, okay.
But the purchase, I mean, they're going to, they're going to award the grants in January, and then we'll order the equipment as soon as possible.
Yeah, I was going to say we should do this because there was a deadline, you know, so.
Right, and.
I'm glad to see this, so.
They are only, they're providing, they're paying for half of any of the counters that you buy, and then, and if you buy any e-poll books, 25 percent of that. But I do have money in the Internal Service Fund to fund our portion. The city will contribute 90,000, and then the grant will pay the rest.
So how many e-poll books are you looking at?
Right now, I'm looking at 58. So it'd be just the city of Morehead and Dilworth.
Okay.
At this point.
There's a lot of people that didn't.
Right. The new ones are really, they're nothing like the ones that we used, tested before.
Oh, okay.
Because I wasn't all that interested, but we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago, and it's really nice.
Very good, okay.
Yeah, really nice.
That'll be better, the folder here.
Yep, totally different than that, so.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so we do have, did we have a motion?
Yeah, there's been a motion.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same.
All right.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
You'll be around for the truth and taxation. All right, so we are kind of through everything here except the committee reports before the truth and taxation. Commissioner Gross, can we start with you today?
Sure. Last Tuesday, I, we had out-of-home placement. A lot of discussion of just, you know, what we do. Do we just provide a safe place for them, or do we want to get ready, want to get the people ready to go, the juveniles to get ready to go into the public, you know? So what it was that we want to do, just a storage place or get programs and stuff like that, and other things. We want to help parents to improve home improvement, you know? And discuss like, I was sort of thinking, who has failed? You know, is it the parents that failed, the school, the church, the community, the county? Is it the child, you know? Who are we going to blame for some of this? And it's not really, I don't think we should be sitting here blaming people, you know, to take care of the problem, you know? And that's what we were discussing there, trying to, you know, how are we going to get this out-of-home placement worked into this new juvenile center that we're trying to build? So a lot of discussion on that.
Was there, I've been asking our leader over there, Brian, quite frequently about the budgetary component of that. In terms, we've heard quite, quite a bit from Rhonda that there could be some dollar savings that have been going to other counties that could, are we, are we making any headway in those dollar numbers? I don't know, Frank, if you can, or Brian can address that. It's got a lot to do with.
Well, we can bring the kids back. We won't have to send them to Bemidji or the different parts of the state, you know? So there's definitely going to be a lot of dollar savings there, you know?
Yeah. But that's kind of what we're looking for, is what.
And I think having them here and having a program here is going to help us better, too.
Sure. Brian, did you want some of that?
Well, no, I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, we discussed that in that meeting, and Rhonda and I and Steve have discussed the issue quite a bit, and she's still working on figures. She gave me some updated figures again the other day, which were very positive. She identified individuals by number, and we will be able to make that information available pretty soon. But it shows what she has spent at the, at Bemidji and the different juvenile centers, and she feels that those individuals could have been placed back here. And it's, it's quite a sum of money. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that will shift back to Clay County rather than sending it out of, out of. I can't say that it's not necessarily going to save social services the hard dollars, but they're going to be brought back into county. But there's a lot of soft costs that we have to remember in there, the windshield time, the counselor's time, that, and, you know, maybe someday we can put a figure on that, too. But it's, it's, the concern is programming, and Steve and Rhonda are working on programming and they will be able to have good programming for the kids here, like Commissioner Gross said. What are we going to do with these kids, and what's the advantages of having them here? And I think there's a lot of advantages, and we'll have to highlight those, so.
It's, it's a pretty important component of the whole thing. We're, we're having this discussion with our member counties next Monday, and in that process, there will be questions about budgets, so.
Yes, there will, and, and Mr. Chair also, but this function has centered on the non-secure side where that Monday meeting is on the secure side.
That's right, on the 2.5.
But they do complement each other. You know, you can't deny that either, so.
That's right, you're right. All right.
Okay, I guess the other meeting, which was Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, we went to the AMC meeting down in St. Cloud. Sunday night, I went to Minnesota Rural Counties, and there we reviewed the priorities for that. Minnesota Rural Counties, transportation was discussed quite a bit. They were talking about where are you going to get the money from? They talked about gas tax, and the two representatives that were there talking to us, neither one was in favor of the gas tax. And so I don't know where they're going to get the money from, but other things we talked about was land being bought by the Nature Conservatory, by Pheasant Forever DNR, which we discussed at our township meetings. And I just got to let you know, I got, Mark Sloan made up a map of all the government land owned by, in our Clay County. And there is a good amount there, but got to remember that some of them are paying taxes. They are getting bill payments and some of that stuff, too. So, but there is concern by other counties, just like it is with our townships, you know, with this land being brought up by Nature Conservatory. State auditor, discussion on the state auditor requiring counties to use the state auditor to do their audits. You know, they, I know they're talking about suing counties that aren't doing it, and there was concern that they're using state money to sue the counties, so there was concern there. Monday, I went to the General Government. They reviewed our, our policy committee for the platform. Steve Simon spoke on, on voting equipment, just like we just approved here. You've got to get our grants in there to, for this voting equipment. Bluewood County gave a good presentation on mental health behavior, and there's a presentation assessing different home set credit, agricultural property classification, veterans exemption, manufacturer home transportation, I mean taxation. So there's a good presentation given on, they're looking at doing our property taxes different. So there's a big group involved in that. Then we had a presentation by Matt Burke, one of, he used to be Senator for the Vikings, and hopefully he gave a very good presentation there. Afternoon, Bell Tronik County gave a presentation on mental health behavior, too, which was interesting, but then, you know, we checked, okay, where did you get the money to do all this? And they got a $2 million grant to, to do this as a priority. I mean, they were, they were set up, the county was set up to do this, to see how it would work out, you know? So I guess if we give $2 million, we can work a good program, too. Monday afternoon, we had the MCIT meeting where they reported that we had a 10.3 million dividend returned to us this year. We should have got that payment, I think, ready. I think we did, but.
Did you get it?
Tuesday, I went to a session where what county boards need to know as far as governance of the county boards, they wanted to know whether we know how, when they do an audit, do we know how to read that audit and stuff like that? Or do we just take the paperwork and move it on, you know? So they were giving a presentation what, what the different terms mean on an audit. Tuesday.
Does anybody know?
Not really. It was a good presentation. That's why Lori's here.
That should be a must-read.
Yeah. Then there's another presentation I attended on the one watershed, one plan, and some counties already have their, or the waterships already have their plan in there, so. And the reason they want to go to this one watershed, one board is for better water management partnerships and funding to support water quality. Tuesday afternoon, the business meeting, went over the different areas of priority and opioids, tax reform, clean water, transportation, healthcare were pretty much things they want to work on. Environmental, wanted to work on land acquisitions. General Government was pretty much, all the technology, if they put out technology, and they're referring pretty much to the licensed beer that just, that new system that just went out there, you know? That they want to come up with an ordinance that if you're going to send something like that out, test it out before you send it out, you know? So they thought that would be a good idea, so.
Lori will test it.
Really?
Yeah. So they want to come up with a, I don't know what you call it, law or ordinance, that all those things have to be tested out prior to, you know, implementing it. Public safety there, again, their emphasis was on opioids, transportation was broadband, and transportation funding, and the health was human services. Okay. I guess that's it for me.
All right.
So.
Commissioner, hey.
I, too, attended the AMC function down in St. Cloud along with the other commissioners, and I went to the policy meeting for the Health and Human Services, and we heard presentations about dealing with the homeless and housing for them in the outstate portions, and some funding that's working its way through the legislature, and some resolutions that we were asked to support. And pretty much everything else that Commissioner Gross said, the Matt Burke speech was very much a highlight about leadership and being involved, and very, very well worth hearing. Then on Tuesday, when we returned, I had a meeting of the City of Morehead Planning Commission, and we had a request from SBA Towers, the telecommunications cell tower that's planned to be built on Redon Main Avenue there in Morehead. And they asked for a one-year extension. They were not able to get all the federal permits and everything approved prior to the expiration of the CUP that we approved a year ago. And so we gave them, that was granted, and we also heard, or made a resolution to, for the city to accept the five-year capital improvement plan on the roads and streets in the city of Morehead. And so that's all we had.
Thank you. Commissioner, what do you?
Thanks. Last week, I also attended the out-of-home placement committee meeting with Commissioner Gross. He did have a great recap on that. The next day, I had the task force for the diversion authority continuing to ask questions of that technical team. There are several different parameters that we are recommending they look further into. The information wasn't, wasn't run, so they're going to do that and get that to us by the meeting on this coming Monday. So I continue to think that's just a really important dialogue that's being had.
Do you want to just note, make mention when the next meeting is?
Yep. The next meeting is on Monday, and I have not got a time yet, but I assume it's at the Fargo Dome, since it's been at the Fargo Dome, or it will, that will be the rotation, but I haven't got that notice yet, so.
I thought that came out.
I thought I sent it to.
Send it to, I think is what.
I don't know why you'd send the task force that, so. The next day, I had the Minnesota Task Force members, a meeting with that and the DNR to update where we are and any questions that we felt maybe weren't asked or answered at the prior day meeting. So that was given to the appropriate areas, and we'll get that information this week. The next day, I had the jail tour, so I appreciate the staff and construction, construction engineers being willing to do that. I thought it was a really good walkthrough, and things are starting to come together quite well. KFGO had a representative there, and they were, they had some questions, and we're excited to see how the progress is moving forward. I also attended the AMC conference in St. Cloud. I want to extend my gratitude to constituents for allowing us to go to that. I think that's a really important connection and networking that we're all able to do there. I am on the Environment and Natural Resource Policy Committee, and we reviewed policy platforms, one of which being something that is, has been a question here in regards to public lands, and when those land sales take place, who is notified? It was added into our platform that local units of government, specifically townships, are also notified when those land sales come up. So I was encouraged to see that was something that came out. And I also attended small sessions in regards to employee reviews and job search issues. I attended the one watershed, one plan presentation, and also extended, attended the extension leadership development program. Like I said, really important dialogues there. Yesterday, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting, and just basic issues that we're kind of diving into right now. We're in the process of updating our personnel policies, manuals, and bylaws, things that had sort of been updated over the past three or four years, but issues we felt were important to address. So if anyone would like some nightstand reading, I've got plenty of it there, but good stuff. We also had our soft close for the executive director position posting. I think we had a pretty good response, so we will be moving forward in, in interviews and narrowing that list down soon. I talked with, like I said earlier, about that, that federal dollar CPG balance, extra dollars. So hopefully we can, someone in the metro can take advantage of those dollars. And we're also in the process of just updating our organizational structuring. Then, this morning, I attended the joint powers meeting in Dilworth. We finalized intergovernmental retreat issues that have come up, and we talked a little bit about the task force process for the diversion authority, and Morehead Schools will be the host of that next year. That concludes my remarks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Whalen.
Well, let's see, I had solid waste advisory last week, and we had staff updates on that. Today, I had Greater Fargo Department EDC Executive Committee meeting to discuss replacement of Jim Gart, the president. He's retiring in March, and so we met to discuss our plans to move forward with replacing him. Let's see, I also attended the AMC meetings in St. Cloud and the MRC meeting Sunday night, and Commissioner Gross reported on that, and he reported on MCIT. And I attended the public safety meetings and. public safety meetings and also a meeting on generational issues with employees the last day. And then I also found out that the Chair of our district has to move on to something else with AMC, and so, being the Vice Chair, I'm now on the Board of AMC, so.
Congratulations.
As luck would have it.
That's what happens for missing a meeting.
That was it for me, so.
Thank you.
All right. I, I also had the Solid Waste meeting on Thursday, the 30th, and we got a report on Take Back Jack, and holiday lights are still, that's another thing that can be collected and recycled. We got a good report on our education update from Shannon Thompson, and Kirk also gave a good report on what's going on, and Julie Kennedy gave a report on paint care, and there's a brochure here that recycle with paint care, and I think it's a, it's a significant deal that rather than having these paints go into our landfill, there's a, a good way to get rid of some of that paint, and it's, we're kind of, we've challenged our staff to see if we can't get some of our retailers to maybe put this up in their locations to, so that, you know, the average household person can see where they can take this stuff, so. So they're, they're thrilled to work on that, aren't they, Kirk? All right. Okay, then, and I also did have the AMC meeting, and I serve on the Transportation Infrastructure Policy Committee, and we heard report, we heard a report from Kevin Stone, our NACO representative from DC. We got some, excuse me, MnDOT 2017 Program Outlook. We had a presentation on Greater Minnesota Transit, where they are and what, what is done. And then finally, we went through, when we go to these meetings at AMC throughout the year, there's policy meetings, and you establish a platform, and the purpose of the annual meeting then is to finalize and approve, adopt the final platform in each, each of our different policy areas. And fortunately for us, there was, there was really only one amendment that was made to our previous platform, and that, and that was AMC supports sales tax revenue from auto parts, be dedicated to highway and user tax distribution fund, and this year, we added the word constitutionally dedicated. So, that means, by having that, that means it's required to stay in for, for transportation, it can't be used for other things, so. And then there was a sentence that was previously in there that dealt with general fund issues, and we just, that was stricken from that policy agenda. Then I also, I also, while I was there, I attended a, a meeting on, they had a presentation on social security, and I did it for two reasons, partly because I'm probably going to get there pretty soon, and the other reason that we talk about all the time, and that's, or that I talk about in the budgeting process, is the people that we have in our communities that are, some of them, that's their sole source of income, and I really wanted to further understand that process when it comes to their ability to, what they can afford and what they can't through the process of social security benefits. So that was a very good, I, I really got a lot out of that one. I also then did attend a, another one that was called, Then There Were Five, and what that was, it was basically a discussion about all the different generations that we have that's in the workforce today, and, you know, so we, let's see if I can find that here. We have the traditionalists, those are the folks who were born prior to 1945, also probably known as the Greatest Generation. We have the Baby Boomers that were from 1946 to 64. We have Generation X from 1965 and to 1976, and Millennials, or they're also known as Generation Y from 1977 to 1997, and Generation Z, which is just now, they're just now getting in the workforce, and those are folks that are born after 1997. And it was a quite interesting discussion about how, how through the generations that they grew up in, how, what influenced them on how they think and what, how they look at the workforce, and it was really an interesting, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this, and I think it's going to be worthwhile in our, when we start talking about personal issues stuff, because it's, it's quite interesting when you, when you look at somebody who looks at things from growing up in the 1940s or the 50s and the 60s compared to somebody who's growing up in the 1990s. They, they don't see things the same way, but they, oftentimes, they're still looking for the same result. It was, Commissioner Wayland, you had, you had a chance to sit on that one too, and it was, it was really a worthwhile program, I thought, to sit on. Okay, then, after that, then this morning, I also had the Clay County Joint Powers Committee meeting, and Commissioner Mojo, I think, gave a good report on that, I don't need to add anymore on that. And with that, we'll go to Mr. Burke.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Auto Home Placement Committee that we met on has been talked about by two of the commissioners, but maybe just we'll add a couple things, just for clarification. I think everybody knows this, but there, we're talking about an expansion to the Juvenile Center because it's full and it's overflowing, but there is a non-secure and a secure side to that. Both of them have programming and different programming, and we were talking a lot about that in this Auto Home Placement Committees, because as the Social Service Committee, I'll call it, that is talking about Auto Home Placement Committee, we are looking at alternatives to try to save some money or keep money back into the colony, and that's why there is a strong support that, from that committee, not that there wasn't some, some descending opinions on, on versus different topics as we discussed it, but we feel that it can be a better job can be had with keeping those kids within colony, and so there was a lot of discussion about programming, and as Commissioner Gross said, what do we do with these kids? How do we, how do we develop, and how do we work with them? So, and then the other big thing on that that is strictly a Clay County issue is the non-secure, is the funding for the construction projects itself. You know, we've been talking about two and a half, and I think it's much more reasonable to talk two and a half to three million, because we don't know what those costs are going to be, they're only estimates right now, and we need to, we need to stay, keep an open mind as to what it's going to be accomplished, how many beds are going to be added and things along those lines. So, anyway, it was a pretty in-depth discussion, we had a pretty serious conversation about all of these things in regards to. I had a visit from Foss Architects, they were the ones that built this courthouse, and just a, just a courtesy visit on, on that type of thing, we visited for quite a while. We met with a gentleman over some zoning concerns in the community of Baker, and that's been part of the Planning and Zoning Commission, too. The person has appeared there and trying to get that somewhat straightened out, working with him on that. We, we had another meeting in regards to a land management office that is coming along fairly well, and in fact, our next move on that is to bring a recommendation to the PIC Committee for discussion purposes, and then to bring it to the Board for information sake and see where you want to go with that. We feel we've worked some positive things out that'll be, enhance the service that we can offer on the second floor down there in the land management, so, we're pretty, we're pretty pleased with that, and we'll see what you guys think about that when we present it to the PIC Committee. Again, several meetings with some personnel issues in regards to that. We had a couple discussions with CAS Clay Juvenile Discussion and working out the agreement between that. Steve and Jenny have, I've been trying, and I have been trying to work with CAS County and some of the, that was our direction from the committee of, of the commissioners that met in regards to that, to work out some of the details, so we're, we've met a few times on that, and I think things are coming along very well in regards to that. I did attend a meeting down at Otter Tail, or Fergus Falls, from Lakes Country, put it on in regards to county coordinators and administrator last Thursday, that I thought was real interesting, I'm glad I went down for that. Had the Diversion Administrative Advisory Meeting on Friday morning to talk about, I'll say ramifications and discussions and approaches as to what the task force is talking about and, and the changes and the work that they're being asked to do. Had some discussion in regards to the food and beverage, referenced the land management group and how that fits in. Had this morning, JPA meeting in Denver's, or Dilworth has been well-covered. Management team, we had a management team meeting this morning, and frankly, one of the things that we highlighted in there, we, we have a little training on it every month that we have that, and this morning, we had, oh, talking about the environment and, and how you treat your fellow employees and different things in light of all that is going on, and, and we had a real good, open discussion, and I think that's what's needed, not being knee-jerking reaction to these things, but have a sustained approach at how we look at things, and I thought we had a very good meeting in regards to that. And then, of course, we have TNT a little later tonight here, in 15 minutes, and worked with Lori and Nancy on putting together information to present to the group tonight. So, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. I did want to add that, thank you for the reminder, I also attended that meeting with the recent, West Central Regional, with CAS County folks on the, last Wednesday, the 29th, to continue that dialogue with future partnership on expansion, so. We'll be in recess then until 6:00 PM when the Truth and Taxation show. At six o'clock, we'll reconvene in our meeting and move into our Truth and Taxation, and this is a discussion of our 2018 Budget and Proposed Property Tax, and I know we have a lot of interest from citizens from throughout our county. We've heard about it quite a bit, I know some of us commissioners have heard more than others. A lot of it has to do with valuations, and I'm sure that's probably why some of you are here tonight, is because you have questions on your valuations, and what I can tell you tonight is that we cannot legally do anything about your valuations here tonight. And I will just explain that process so that everybody is aware of it. In the spring of every year, and Lori, what time does that?
March.
That comes out in March, you all receive a notice like this, and it says a valuation notice. And when you get that valuation notice, it always shows your previous year's valuation and the proposed valuation for the next year. It's during that process, and on there then it also outlines the proper procedure for you to go through to be able to appeal your proposed new valuation. So I just want it clear tonight that that's, that is actually a separate meeting, then it goes through the process, and then ultimately, if you follow all the appeals processes and you don't get satisfaction, then you would come to this county board, and I believe that meeting is held in June, am I correct? The, the middle of June. That's the meeting then that you would come to, to formally go through the appeal process that we have some say in dealing with. So your valuation issues, we can't deal with tonight. If you have questions regarding those valuations tonight, we do have our assessor's offices here, they're in a room next door, they would, they're going to be more than willing to talk with you one-on-one, so you can ask them questions as to why yours increased by what it did, and what were the reasonings behind that, and that, but to get any of those changed, legally, we can't do that tonight, and you would then have to go through an appeal process starting next, next March. So I just, that, that is, that is the, the way it works, we have no control over that, that's, that's done by state statute on how we deal with that. But tonight, but where you do have a say in in terms of your increased taxes, also can be based on what your county board spends. That's the portion that tonight's meeting is about. So I would encourage you to, if you want to talk to Nancy next door and her staff, you can do that regarding your valuations, but I would also encourage you to sit in and hear the discussion that we're going to go through, our county administrator and our, and our county auditor is going to go through our budget and how we arrive at where we are preliminarily. Keep in mind, also, you should also be aware that on your county tax statement that you just got, and I'm sure between your valuations, why you're concerned, you, you, not only did your valuation go up, but you probably are seeing a large increase in your actual property tax. I'm sure, I'm sure both those are big issues to you. One thing you, you need to be aware of, there, there are three components to a property tax. The one is the county tax, the one is either, whether you're from a city or a township, and then the last one would be whatever school district your property is in. There's three different components to that. What we're talking about tonight is the only thing that Clay County can control, and that's the budget for the Clay County line home. We, we don't have anything to do with what cities do in terms of their budget or what school districts do. So, I, we certainly can take, and what we'd like to do is to go through the budget, handout that we have, and then we would certainly like to hear any feedback that you have on our current proposed budget for 2018. If, if you were here strictly with questions regarding your valuation, then I would, I would say, why don't you go next door and you can visit with Nancy and those staff? Oh, there's Nancy right there.
I would like to know what those are, too. So I'd like to know what those are.
Oh, the issues?
Like what their increases would be.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but they're, it's, okay, so, and actually, I don't know, there might be a waiting line to go, or maybe we could, if they'd like to sit on the budget talks while they're, because they're not all going to get help at the same time, Brian, I don't know if we can.
Right. Mr. Chair, I, they're prepared for that over two, then, and they have the chairs set up and.
All right, very good.
So they can move through, I guess.
Well, for those that are staying, thank you for staying, and, and Mr. Burke, if you would like to come forward, and Lori, you're going to, you want to stay there, you got your computer there? All right, Brian, you want to come forward? Brian is our county administrator, between him and all of our department heads, they work hard all year, well, since we start our budgetary process probably in, we start thinking about May, and it gets pretty heavy into July and August and September. Keep in mind, folks, we have, our county board is required by statute to, to have a preliminary levy passed by resolution in September. Once we adopt that resolution, that preliminary levy cannot go, go up, but it can go down. And so what, so your proposal that you have on your, on your property tax statement for, that deals with the county spending, is a preliminary, based on a preliminary budget. We, our county board sets our final budget in December, by, by the last meeting of December, and part of the reason that we do that is primarily because of this meeting. It allows you to review what we're looking at in terms of our budget, and allows you to comment to us, and let us know if you think there's an area that we're not doing enough, if we're doing too much, but this is your meeting to discuss those issues in terms of, of the current budget. So if, if anybody has additional questions on the process, we would, glad to take those now, but otherwise, Mr. Burke will have you go through and start this discussion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Probably before we get started, if we could make sure that all of the people that came in, I'm going to be working off this worksheet, and may you pick them up? in, I'm going to be working off this worksheet, and did you pick them up on the way in? If everybody, if nobody is, if there's somebody that hasn't received one yet, it'd be really helpful, because we're going to go through this slow, because the pages aren't numbered and I want you to make sure that you are working off the correct page. So, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
The first page, and I'm going to the first colorful one here, that says Clay County Tax Levy of thirty-one million ninety-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. That is the amount that we collect from the taxpayers of Clay County to pay for the different services that we are rendered. And the county auditor's office has it set up on different accounts and she identifies where the money is coming for, from, for these different services. So that's why you'll see it split out. The spending expenditures of it is going to be at the next page and that is broken down even more, because if you'll see on the first page, you'll see in the lower left-hand side, it says revenue of eighteen million. That's the revenue fund and there's a lot of different departments that come out of that revenue fund. So the second page, and that says on top, Clay County Budget Expenditures, eighty-three million five hundred and seventy-two thousand. And you can, your first question can be, how do you expand eighty-three million with collecting thirty-one? There's lots of other programs that come in to be here. And you'll see right out of the, the chute that the, down on the bottom, Social Services expense twenty, is projecting spending twenty-one million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And if you again go back to the first page that says revenue, Social Services collecting eight million four hundred thousand dollars from the local residents.
Yeah, it is, the, the eight million is the actual charge or that we pay, that our, our Clay County taxpayers pay for social service programs is eight million four hundred and thousand, whereas the total on the, on the next page shows twenty-one. What Brian is saying is we have a lot of state and federal pass-through dollars. When it comes to social services areas within Clay County, we are basically an arm of the state. The state requires us to provide certain services and with those services, there's a portion that they say, you, you locally have to provide a cost share. And basically, so what you're seeing there on that eight million dollars amounts to the local cost share that we are required to.
Required.
To, to spend on behalf of Clay County. So, so when you see ninety-five, or let's see, what's, what's in it, eighty-three million dollars, that, that's not all coming out of Clay County pocket, but it's still tax dollars, don't get me wrong, but it's, it's tax dollars that are primarily funded by the federal government and the state government.
And, and you described that well, and I think that's something the public has to remind or be reminded of, because we have to remind ourselves of it once in a while, that we are an arm of the state government and social services are a lot of state mandates that are, and they're talked about all the time. Get rid of the mandates and we get rid of some of the expenses. Well, right now, the mandates are there and they're required to give this kind of service and, and so that is definitely an important factor. It's, it's a huge budget item. Then going to the next page, I'll call it the third page after the cover page on it. And on top, it says Clay County Levy History. Now, again, that's talking about the budget, but we just, there's, there's twenty-eight years listed here. And if you look at two thousand eighteen, there is a proposed increase of six point two percent. I averaged those twenty-seven years prior and the average yearly increase is five point eight seven. So you're about spot on, the average over a twenty-eight or twenty-seven year period on that. Whether it's relevant or not, just, it's just for information's sake, that we're pretty consistent with two thousand eighteen of, for the prior twenty-seven years have averaged that.
Very good. And then that, and for, for those of you, that is, that is before we take into consideration growth in our county.
Yes, it is.
So for example, the preliminary levy that we set in September of this year, like I talked about earlier, was six point two percent. When, when you include the new growth that has occurred in our county, that percentage dropped to four point seven three.
Yes.
So, so our expenditures, basically this year over last year, netted out at four point seven three percent. All right, continue.
Okay, and the next page of the handout says Clay County's Budget History on the top of it. And it starts at the year two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, projected as the two thousand eighteen. And you'll see the first segment up on top, you'll see revenues over on the left-hand column, and that is the revenues that we plan to collect through the various programs from the state and federal government and different things along those lines. And the total budget revenues are seventy-six million six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And then if you follow down the column, it, it starts with expenditures and then it shows, and you said we're going to talk about the budgets, that's what's been budgeted in every one of these accounts that we're going to expend, expect to expend that money in. Now, when you get down to the bottom, it, it says total budgeted expenditures and it's eighty-three million dollars. And of course, the first, I think, first common sense approach is what you're projecting is that you're only taking in seventy, seventy-six and a half million and you're spending eighty-three point five. The math doesn't work out over a long-run period and I, I would totally agree with you, but there's some, one that jumps out real heavily is about halfway's down the page when it says solid waste, an expenditure of seven point six million dollars. And that's a huge increase over the other year and that is because they have been saving dollars for big purchases. A Bomac Packer at the landfill costs six hundred thousand dollars. And, and, and bulldozers cost an awful lot of money. So the point being is they are project to spend many more dollars next year, that's just an example, than what they're going to take in because they have been saving that money for that purpose. So, and that can be said with other things as well. So you, you know, again, we're not going through it by line by line, but you can, because if you turn the page, there's basically two columns on the next page. And I'll hold this up just to make sure that everybody's on the right sequence of it. And it shows a two thousand seventeen budgeted expenditures and it shows a two thousand eighteen expended budget, expended budgetures, budget expenditures. And there will go department by department by department as to what they are spending in two thousand seventeen and what they're expected to expend in two thousand eighteen. And again, I guess, don't have to, don't have to go a long ways down, but some of the ones, we talked about, Social Services a little bit, and we'll, we'll talk about another one that jumps out. If you go about halfway down the page, you'll see corrections at, at running up against five million dollars. That's housing our prisoners and that is becoming more and more and more expensive. We have seventy prisoners roughly on a daily count outside of county right now. You don't think that costs a lot of money? That's why you're building a jail, is because you'll level that off and you'll, I, I would dare say, be able to do it cheaper, because you're spending a lot of money in transportation costs and deputies and corrections officers moving these prisoners around. And along with that, very close to it, you just jump up just a little bit above it, right above the nine-one-one, that kind of jumps out at you, is about four point three million dollars for law enforcement, that's the sheriff's office. Well, if you look at those two figures, you're into about nine and a half million dollars and, and that gets to be lots of money for your law enforcement and you know what's going on in this community. You read the newspaper as well as I do and it's not getting any better. And so when we talk about our social services demands and our law enforcement demands and our juvenile demands and our out-of-home placement that falls under social services, the demands are very, very heavy on this community. We are part of a metropolitan area. We'd like to think we're agricultural, rural, county, we're not. We're part of a bigger metropolitan area now and that's just what's happening. The, the next page is just a continuation of that. It breaks it down by road and bridge and social services and public health and, and things along those lines. So there's a lot of information. We're going to go through line by line and each, I just picked out a couple bigger ones there, so. Then, if you move on just a little bit further, and it's this page here, I'll hold it up because it's got some highlighted areas in yellow with some red on the top, looks like this. And I know they should be numbered and I apologize for that, but we pulled this information from different sources and things, so it wouldn't have taken that long to even hand-number them before we sent them out. That'd have been easier and we should have done that. But using this, if you look at that, on top it says Real Estate Tax Projections, comparisons using September thirtieth, TNT levies. If you look at that, this is an example of the city of Morehead. I mean, it's the largest population base we have. Lori's office can do this for each and every township and city and school district and everyone in this room is probably individually different. So this is an example of Morehead, if you're a resident in Morehead. And again, it shows the information from two thousand seventeen and then it shows the information in the second column for two thousand eighteen. And if you go down to the, near the bottom of the first column, under the hundred and fifty thousand dollar a property value, you'll see that the change, and I know we talked about valuations today, quite a bit, and that's what's being talked about a lot. If your property did not change in value, that you're comparing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar value with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar value, and this is the total column, is sixty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents, your, your taxes would have gone up, which is a three point six two percent. Now, if you move to the right slightly, into the yellow highlighted area, that's the county's column. And, and if, if everybody isn't following that, I mean, please have them speak up so that we can get them on the right place, because this is very important. If that property, excuse me, did not go up, the county's portions on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars went up fifteen dollars and eighty-two cents, which was two point seven four. The school district went up nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents, which was three percent. And the city of Morehead went up twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. So the tax went up double, you're paying double to the city than you are to the county. It's just.
On the increase.
On the increase, on the increase. So I just want to point that out so that we're clear on that. And then some of the other EDA and watershed and then it's just a total at the end. So if you kind of understand the concept, then it goes to a two hundred thousand dollar example, a two hundred and fifty thousand example and a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar example. And the reason why it stops there, because that's where the homestead, I'll call a homestead tax credit, it's called something different now.
Market value.
Market value credit is eliminated and you'll see that in one of these columns. But just if you follow that. Now, again, and I'm going to repeat myself, that is if this value stayed the exact same and we know values normally go up. And, and that's probably why some people are here, because it went up a lot. And they, they do assessments and I guess it's not an evaluation issue, so I won't go into that. Okay, so if we turn the page, there, on top of it, it says Summary of Estimated Market Values and Tax Capacity for the past fourteen assessment years. Now, this is a little more complicated, but yet, if you go to the, let's say the tillable land estimated market value, that's kind of right in the center of the page, and it says a percentage of the whole, and then you'll move to the right and it says resident land and building and percentage of the whole, you'll see that in two thousand four, the tillable was eighteen point nine percent. And this all totals up to about eighty percent, because commercial isn't in here. And then you'll see that the residence land and building was fifty-nine point six percent. Well, as you march through the years, you know what happened to farmland over the last ten, fifteen years. It really spiked, it's coming back down now, but if you go on down to two thousand fourteen, the farmland was picking up thirty-eight percent of that cost, was eighteen. It jumped up twenty percent in those years. So there was a real shift where the residence and buildings and things was picking up fifty-nine point six percent of that tax bill, they dropped all the way down to forty-two percent. So in recent years, the homes in town were feeling pretty good, their taxes weren't going up much, because the agricultural land were taking leaps and bounds. I mean, the, the, there were thirty-five, forty percent increase in value of land. And maybe there's still some out there, so I'm not going to say there isn't. That has now changed course. Agricultural land is dropping in value, dropping in value, and it goes some each year. So right now, the residents in the cities and, and the farmsteads too, those, those buildings as well, they're back up now to fifty-one point seven percent of, of the share of the tax, where the agricultural now has dropped all the way from a high of thirty-eight down to twenty-seven percent. So even though the tax rate on that hundred and fifty thousand dollars may have stayed the same for the county levy overall, there's been a shift from ag land now going back into the residential areas. So that's a cost of shift as well. And, and then of course, I know the valuation too. So that's what that page is about, and I think it speaks a message about why the tax rate may have not gone up a lot, but the shift from ag land to back to the residential and then of course, the change in the valuations of each and every one, or most people's property, and some have gone up a great deal. And, and again, I, I don't want to go into all that, because the evaluation is, your Board of Equalization occurs in June and you need much more detail into it on that. So.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chair, I'll step off to the side.
Yeah, I want to, I would want to make a couple of comments. In terms of what, what really makes up the six point two increase that we're talking about this year, the vast majority of those dollars, it really has to do with our labor I think, I think this year between, because of our union contracts and all of our, we had a cost of a living adjustment, was it two point five?
Yes.
Two point five percent this year. And then just like all of you who deal with your own healthcare costs at home, you, you understand that those things skyrocket. And with our county employees, we, this year, we saw a significant increase in healthcare costs. We, through agreements, we share some of those increases with our employees. Our employees pick up fifty percent of those increases and so does the county pick up fifty percent. And that's something that's gone on for, for many, many years. I, I believe when we calculated out the numbers, are, just about our, our entire increase was due to those two numbers. That, that was the significant portion of our total increase. So if you, if you were to exclude those, I think we're, we've stayed pretty level with previous year's spending.
Exactly right. And specifically, I think, I think most citizens know that health insurance costs skyrocketed and I know it's very easy to say, yes, but why should I pay yours and mine both? And that's, you know, we understand that. But we had a fourteen point nine percent increase in our tax, or in our insurance premiums, which worked out to be a tax levy increase of about, an overall of about two point six percent, just for the insurance. So that was, that was huge.
But I think our, I think our, I think our citizens also need to know that, that we continue to work on finding solutions to those increases. And we've, we've had groups together with our employees, working together with our administration and we're coming up, there's some things through policy and, and union contracts before that have kind of not helped. As you all know, insurance rates go up based on claims and what you have for policies. And we are really looking closely at what policies we're offering and what Cadillac policies are out there that are costing all of our costs to rise and how we can maybe eliminate some of those and still have a good protection plan for our, our employees. So we, we are working on that and, and our employees are at the table with us. They agree that there's problems that we have in that area and we're hopeful that we're going to find solutions coming up and hopefully, it's going to be happening as early as two thousand eighteen where we're going to make. where we're gonna make some changes that can help.
Contain us.
Help slow down those drastic increases that we see. We have some of our staff in here tonight that serve on that committee, and they're nodding, they're heading an agreement, I guess, that we're working on that. So you can, you as citizens and taxpayers can be assured that we are doing everything we can to keep those numbers as low as we can. So I think with that, I would like to, you know, if any of these folks that are still here that want to hear about our budget, want, if they want to say something.
And Mr. Chair, I asked them to sign in, so that if they came in early and wanted to speak early, that maybe you could reference that list, rather than last person coming in, speak first, you know, or something like that. I'll get you that list.
Well, I, you know, there's, I think there's not that many here. If there's somebody, we would like to hear from you, if you would care to come up, and just, if you have questions for us, we'll try to explain them for you.
I guess I got a couple of questions.
You want to, you can, you can, you want to use the mic, and then just, if you want to just give us your name, please.
My name is Gerald Ricard, I live on, over by Holly.
Okay.
And I guess I listen to everything you guys have to say, and that you're doing your best to cut costs, I understand that, that everything goes up. But, you know, there's three sides to every story, yours, mine, and the truth. You, there just is. And I mean, you gotta take a look at, it's kind of each man for himself, and you're, basically, you have nothing to do with our taxes, and I understand Minnesota says, the state of Minnesota says, well, you gotta do this, and you gotta pay this much money. But what about the guy that just can't pay you anymore? What is your plan there? I mean, do you, are you got some kind of a home for me to live in when you tax me out of mine, or, or do you, you provide the bullet, or what is your thoughts there?
I, I, I want to say, I've, I've been saying that exact same thing to our county board. We do have to realize, and I, I don't know if you happened here earlier, I, I brought up that I went and sat in on a presentation at our county meetings in St. Paul, and one of, I specifically went to a deal on social security, because I wanted to understand more about people on fixed income. And, you know, just, I tried, I, you're preaching to the choir with me, I guess.
Well, it's basically a question. Where are we going with this? I listened to you and say, well, there's basically nothing you can do, and I understand everything costs more, okay? We've been paying our taxes for 44 years, and, and never complained about it once, because I understand there's an increase every year, and I perfectly, I hope that you increase it some every year. Everybody tries to make a little bit more, and everything goes up, but if we can stay at a level playing field, we're okay. But eventually, the, if you set this out of kilter, where the cost for me to stay here and stay alive, you know, does, how does my income, what is my plan?
Right. And, and we've had that discussion, and we're wrestling with that.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna be honest with you, we're wrestling with that.
Yeah.
But we need to listen to what you're saying.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of people like you.
Right, right.
Are saying the same thing.
I mean, I want a job, I understand that.
And part, part of the, part of the issue that we have here is that, you know, we're trying to provide what the state says we're supposed to provide and do these things, and at what point do we provide to them to the point where we're creating a bigger pool of people who are gonna need that help from the, because they can't pay on their own, they're gonna have to leave their own homes, and then fall in the hands of the county to support them. It's, it's a cycle we want, don't want to happen. I can tell you that, I don't think there's a board member up here who wants that to happen, and we fight with that.
Right.
We do, and, you know. Alls I can tell you is, is we're gonna keep trying.
So, so I'm not, you know, savvy on all the government policies and programs that are out there, but, because I just work for a living, I just go to work, and I hope that you guys do everything right when I'm gone, okay? I trust in that. Right? And, but, but who do we go to? Like you say, the state mandates you have to have X amount of dollars for social services, all right? Well, what is the state's plan when we can't give it to them? I mean, because that's coming. And all it would take is for something bad to happen in the country, and people just aren't gonna have it. I mean, you could have a drought in one year, and now it really hurts your taxable income. I mean, I don't farm, but I was born and raised on a farm, and I know that taxes are a big issue, you know? I heard my dad bitch and complain about taxes all the whole time I was growing up, and...
I don't know any, I don't know of anybody who enjoys paying taxes.
No, no, but I mean, I know it's a reality. But sooner or later, you gotta get a hold on this.
Right.
You know, I look on, there's things on, there's social services, there's all kinds of things, and sooner or later, the people who are paying are gonna need them social services pretty soon, because they're not gonna be able to keep up with it, they're gonna be, you'll be taxed out of your house. And so we, we gotta do something, I mean, we have to come up with some sort of a plan. And I mean, it has to generally start, you know, I mean, your six, you know, and a quarter percent increase that you guys increased, that's very reasonable. Matter of fact, I, I, I'm, I mean, I applaud you for only going up that much, really, I'm sure that was a bear to trim a bunch of things back, I understand that. But there's other areas that we're looking at, like, you know, I know that this meeting isn't on the assessment tonight, but something went drastically wrong with that program, and it has to be looked into.
What was your valuation increase?
Our taxes went up just about $926 a year, I believe.
Between the three entities, right?
Value?
Just their whole.
Bottom of the page, what is it?
The increase was 76,920.
Very bottom line tells you the percentage it went up.
44.1.
That's the valuation, right?
No, she's, her entire taxes, 44 percent increase.
Right.
76,000.
Yeah.
Can I question, are you, are we planning on that every year, or can we, can we, can we assume that that's gonna jump more, and that in 10 years, I'll need $35,000 a year for taxes?
No, better not.
Well, what happened was, we got a new system, which is the way we value, and I don't do this, that's the system, but we got a brand-new system, which is, we input all the data from your home into this system, it's a new one, so they took all that data and reshaped it countywide, so everybody's went up that mu, I mean, not, you know, not that much necessarily, but, except for the city of Moorhead. City of Moorhead did it a couple of years ago, so theirs went up a couple, a couple of years ago, and now the whole county went up, but it shouldn't happen again, not, not this much.
The, the valuation that you got this year probably accounted for the vast majority of your increase, because obviously, if you would, if everybody would've stayed the same, you would've seen a, a 2-point-some percent increase in your county tax from the previous year, not 40 percent.
Right.
So that valuation, in that valuation, I'm gonna put faith in these people as a one-time deal.
It'll, it'll solve, I mean, depending on the market, it'll solve it on the market or something. Except for this one-time adjustment that was countywide, except for the city of Moorhead.
Nine and a half percent, isn't it?
Possibly.
That's nine and a half percent was the increase that Holly got hit with.
Yeah.
Nine and a half percent, just Minnesota State, which is 90 percent, raised the increase in the tax.
All right.
So it shouldn't go up that 76 every year, it may go up, you know, eight or 10,000 a year, but not that big a number.
Well, what steps do I take, and who do I go to talk to? Who do we have to take out of office so that this gets remedied? It obviously isn't you guys, right? But I can assume that, I mean, my taxes are gonna go up roughly $1,000 a year, and...
It shouldn't from now on.
No.
It shouldn't from now on.
No.
After this one adjustment?
Right.
This is an adjustment year?
Yeah.
Now, it should level off.
Yeah. And I talked to where I work about, you know, that I needed some money, because this was an adjustment year, and I really can't say what they said.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And I work for a living, and I've never drawn unemployment, I've never been without a job my entire life, and neither has my wife, and we raised our kids and paid for everything, and we totally accept, you know, two, 300 bucks a year going on there, that's just reasonable. It's been doing that forever. But, but when it starts jumping like this, and, because there's gonna be this extra revenue, and the state's gonna see that, and they're gonna jump on it, so you can count on the fact that they're gonna want that every year. If you can do it one year, you can do it another year.
Well, it's not extra revenue. What happens is, we need this much, and it could spread amongst, amongst the tax base.
Yeah.
And so you had a greater share this year, because your value went up, but next year it should level off, because it won't, it won't, you won't see that $76,000 increase next year.
Right, right. But I still have to take a look at what it costs me outgoing, and that's the part I want to see become more reasonable. And now, who do I, who do I go to? Do I go to St. Paul and go in the State Capitol? Frank, do I take Paul Marcourt down there, and we go race Mac and Kent Eakin? I know both those guys very well, do I need to talk to them and rattle their cage, or who do I go to?
Yep.
Because something, really, it's gotta change. What you're doing probably doesn't have to change, right? It isn't, you're not the root of the problem.
Well, I mean, we, we still, we still have some options. We're, you know, we're not, we're not guilt-free here. I'm gonna flat-out tell ya, we're not guilt-free. We still, we still are the ones who control roughly $31 million of what is being spent in this county. And, and we can look at it in every way, shape, or form that we want to, and every time that we do suggest pulling a dollar out, someone somewhere is hurt. And, you know, and, and I kinda, I kinda heard a comment that my fellow Commissioner Wayland here said not too long ago, he used to be the Moorhead Police Chief, and he said, you know, once we were given a dollar amount, you know, we could've used a lot more money and done a lot good, but we had to do with what we had to deal with. And that's, that's how we need to, to, I think to resolve your issue. We can't solve everybody's problems, and we, we need to recognize that as a board, that it's not gonna be our ability to solve all problems of all people, or we're gonna have everybody lining up to get in line to, to...
Well, obviously, when you went to this new assessment program to assess everybody's property value, that must've been in a meeting here where you voted for it.
Yeah.
And said, let's go with this new program.
Yeah, but, but the program, the program itself, though, which you gotta understand, that, that process revalues your numbers to be more, my guess is that if, whatever value you have on your property right now, you could probably get close to that if you sold it.
Would you give me that?
Well, I won't, I can't. You know, but that, but that's, that's the very common thing that's said. But we, we've had a guy here, Brian just talked about a guy who was just here not too long ago, and he used to complain his property was up to 400 and some thousand dollars. He came to these meetings and talked about it, and he sold his property a year later for five, over $500,000. And we didn't hear from him anymore. You know, so the, the whole point is, is we're trying, and the assessor's office has also got a mandate from the state of Minnesota that says we have to be between 90 and 105 percent of your actual value. We have to be within that, the target range has to be there. So, so if we fall outside of that, Clay County can get penalized. So now, I don't know exactly what your dollar valuation was.
Was it 377?
No. For 2018, it's 340.
Yeah.
340,700.
Sold.
Yeah, well...
You can't get that out of it. I mean, I mean, I know this meeting isn't on the assessment value, but, but, but it's the program at which you arrived at the assessment value that you must've all brought into play here, because it changed from last year, unless one person just decided, hey, I got a really good idea, watch this, you know? But you must've had somebody propose this program, or this new way of assessing, right?
It's just a new software program. They assess the same way, it's just a new program, and some of the townships didn't have enough sales to make any increased judgments, but when we put this new system in, then we could do this countywide, and so you're, you were probably in a township that didn't have very many sales. And so then you got, you were kind of lagging behind, so you were probably down in the 90 percent, and now you might be more up towards the 100 percent of market value. But before, and so it made that adjustment this one time to get you closer to that 100 percent.
Well, one thing I know about software programs is they don't last very long, and you gotta get new ones every once in a while. And, and this new one that you got is not good. It's a bad program, okay? Because it's not on the money, it just...
Well, so, so I think in that valuation, if you, you know, I think you should talk to the folks next door about that heavy increase that you got.
Yeah.
I'm glad you stayed to give your input on the budget, I'm really happy that you did that. Now, but I, I still think you should talk to them next door, and you can tell them what you think of their software program. And, but then, but also then, you know, find out about the process for next year, and you have the ability, you, you can't get adjusted for this year, but if, but if you truly feel your $340,000 is way out of line, and you can come in and you can give evidence to show differently, you can still do that next year. That's, you just cannot do it anymore for this year.
And if I didn't have a job, I'd have time to do that kind of stuff.
Well, but some of those, some of those, you know, they can work with you, and they'll, they'll even come out to your house, if they have to, they'll come out to your house in the evening.
Do you have one more question?
Sure.
At the tax rate that you go, it's so many cents per dollar is what you go by, right? In the county. Has everyone paid that same, same rate for everything? Is everything across the board, if it's worth $5,000, no matter what it is, if somebody has a piece of property that's worth five grand, do they pay the same tax as everybody?
No, that's, what happens is, you've got a market value, and then you take that kind of class rate, and there's 20-some different class rates. Homestead is, you take 1 percent, commercial property above 150 is 2 percent, ag land is a half a percent, and that comes up with a number called tax capacity, and then you take that tax capacity, every place, everybody pays the same rate on that tax capacity, after you've taken the class rate times your value, then everybody pays the same.
Why is it different if you have something that's worth 100,000, why isn't it exactly the same? Do you feel that some people are paying too much, and you need to give them a more of a break?
I'll let you, the, the state has come up with different tiers, so ag land pays less.
Yeah, and so those class rates that we're talking about, those are, those are established legislatively. So those are something that, through the legislative process, when you, when you start talking about, should you talk to Marcourt, or should you talk to those folks, that also can come, come into play in term, you, if broken down even as far as, within each township, there, there can be different class sections within the township.
Well, we're talking class rates of types of properties, so...
Oh, okay.
Ag land, residential, commercial.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Apartment buildings, you know, all those pay different class rates.
Which really doesn't make any sense, because if you got something that's worth a dollar, why, why do some people not have to pay as much on that property that's worth a dollar, and others more? That has to change. You guys can change that. There, it's changed, done. All right.
To talk to Paul Marcourt on that.
Okay, well, that's all I have to do. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I got the same question. You know, Galen Andrick, I'm from Holly, too. Mine went up 36 percent, and according to this letter, it says we were supposed to come here tonight to talk about this.
About your budget.
Oh, it says about, it's time to provide feedback for proposed levies right now.
And that's the levy, that's the budget. It's not valuation. That's exactly what it says.
Well, the whole thing's on proposed taxes.
Let me, let me show you a difference here, if I could.
But I went over there and talked to them, and that's lip service over there.
So here, this, this one is proposed taxes, values, and classifications. I wrote two things, this is your value, this is the valuation, this is the one that's used in terms, separately, you have to give your valuations. This, the time to provide feedback on proposed levies is now, that's, that's the statement you got.
Yeah.
Levis is not...
That's why I'm here, because you told me to come tonight.
Levis is not valuation. Levis is what we spend in a budget.
Okay.
They're, they're two different things.
All right.
So, so tonight's meeting was for all of you to discuss how we spend your money.
Well, that's up to you guys.
Well, but, but you still have to say it. I mean, the gentleman before you's had a, had a lot of good points, that, you know, and that's...
Well, I got the same points, but what I, what I don't understand is, we've been out there for over 30 years, we haven't made one change, I have never taken out a building permit, because we haven't changed one thing, and my valuation went way up. Now, my neighbors who got big new houses and stuff out there, they're taxed about the same as mine, and they went up 9.1 percent. Why is mine going up 36? and they went up nine point one percent. Why is mine going up thirty-six?
And again, that, that goes, that goes to...
Who's the assessor? I never seen no assessor out there.
No, I mean, here, you can ask him to show me all the...
I was over there and I asked him. You can go on the internet and get all that stuff off. I seen all my neighbor's stuff. And I've talked to a lot of my neighbors, some only went up nine point one percent. One went up twenty-two. And he got assessed this year. As far as I know, there was no assessor out there, and mine went up thirty-six.
Okay, well, then, then I, I think you, you know, and again, your valuation, I, I don't mean to be passing the buck here, but you, your thirty-six percent increase, you got notice of that in March. And it was your March notice that told you what steps to take if you wanted to appeal or, you know, appeal that assessed value that you had. And there's a process that goes, if you're, if you're in a township, you would've gone to whatever your township is, that's the first form of it. And it follows a process, then ultimately it culminates. If you haven't gotten your satisfaction through your township, or if you live within the city of Holly, your, your appeals would be to the city of Holly first. And then if they, if they do not, um, satisfy you in terms of making changes or at least tell you why, uh, in a way, then you can follow the process then that ultimately culminates in coming to our county board in, in June of every year. That's, that's the valuation process.
Yeah, I, okay. But I, I just don't understand how you can increase the valuation like that when you don't even come out and look at anything, and there's no, uh, building permits to go by.
Well, then I, then I think you need to talk to them, and you're gonna go there next March.
I went over there right away.
All right, okay, all right.
Guys, hello? Not gonna talk proper taxes, you just explain you can't do anything about it. I, you know, everyone's frustrated about that.
Yes.
Well, I'm here to ask a couple of questions about your budget here.
Okay, sure.
Uh, first one, uh, top, whatever this page, I'm not sure it is, it says budget expenditures...
Is that the two column page?
Yeah, two columns, yeah.
All right.
General budgetary, top, it says...
Yes.
Excellent. Um, uh, first one is the court administrator, goes from a hundred thousand to a hundred and ninety thousand. That's quite a large increase.
Yes.
So, can you itemize that out? What's, where's the ninety thousand in addition to that?
Yeah, and, and the...
And I don't mean detail, I just, just give me right to the point. I don't think everyone's got time to get things to do, so...
Um, as, as you know, um, when you hear about our busting inmate population, it means our courts are busy. And when our courts are busy, even though it's a, it's a district court, there's still a responsibility of the county to... It, it all has to do with the increase that we're having. It's...
Okay, all right, okay. That leaves actually another question that I have now. So what are we doing to, uh, maybe take time to stop doing petty offenses and bring it through the administration and through the court system so we can bring that number back down to a hundred thousand? That's a huge question that we could ask, is why are people being, you know, brought to court, brought to this, or fined for things that maybe shouldn't be fined for? I mean, is it just purely...
And that, and that's a, that's a legitimate question. Um, you know, I, I don't know to what degree, um, I think some petty offenses, a lot of those don't even go through the court system.
Correct.
You know, so, um, I think if you're going through the court system, you're, you're involved again with a state statute that's involved.
Oh, exactly, but you know, on a local level, too, with, you know, obviously there's mandates through local law enforcement agencies that, that, you know, can enforce certain laws and not laws, so I don't know. If you guys have any estate within that.
Right.
We have a former police chief, I don't know, maybe he could answer that.
He doesn't wanna get mixed in this, he's not looking over here. But anyway, we'll go to the third, uh, question I have. A general, unallocated general went up two, one point two million dollars.
Yeah, good. Laurie, do you wanna explain, um...
Um, yeah, we got, what we do is we start doing our budgeting in May, and so all the department heads put in their budgets, but we don't get our insurance increase till August.
Okay.
And so our insurance increase was seven hundred and two thousand dollars. So, the biggest majority of that is, is that cost.
Gotcha, so half that, yeah, absolutely. Okay. And that's just, and basically your unallocated general is just basically saying, uh, whatever may come, may come, we can pay for it.
Yeah, as a matter, as a matter of fact, isn't the cost of living adjustment in there, too?
No, that's not, no, that's not.
That's, that's in the individual...
All right, well, thank you for your time, and, uh, I hope you guys do the best you can to, uh, bring that number down.
Mr. Chair?
We are, uh, we are gonna still talk about it next three weeks.
Just, just one thing. I think he, he asked a real good question on that court administration, and I gotta, I gotta take the blame for that. Part of that is, I missed a contract where they added down at the court level two or three additional attorneys that they contracted for last year. So, we had to pay a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year, but we had to take that out of reserves, so this year was to make up a gap that I did not recognize coming in. So, you were very astute in catching that, so it, it won't go up that ninety again because it'll level off. It's one of those things that we missed in our budgeting process, so... And could we get your name, too?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yeah.
Oh, Andrew Peterson.
Peterson, all right, okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, do we have any other folks that care to comment on the budget?
I have a question, but I don't know if you can answer it or if they have an answer for it. And the question is...
You wanna, you wanna tell us who you are?
Lynn Park Dilworth. Uh, the question is, um, knowing that you were going to adjust property values to be more in line with whatever the realtors are selling for, I'm assuming that's... Who, who says we're not up to, who says this is what this value's worth? Is that a county thing that says, oh, our property, we're really selling and they go up? Or do you contract with someone to figure out what that number is? And then the next question with that is, if you knew this increase was coming, how come there was no warning? Or why couldn't you put it over a couple of years or something? That's, that's huge for a household to absorb. And usually when the state says, "We're gonna increase some mandates on you," they at least give you a year's notice so you can kinda pad and get ready for it.
Yeah, the, the, the process to, that goes through the evaluations and part of what they use is they're supposed to go through and use what they call comparable sales. It's all based on sales. It's just, it's just like when Brian talked about the ag community, how they were, at one time they were up to, um, paying thirty-eight percent of the total deal. It was because at that point in time, uh, they were getting really good prices for their land, and farmland was selling for a lot of money. And, and in that same time period, when that farmland sells for a lot of money, that valuation then goes to all those acres throughout comparable areas. And now, so now the same thing happens, they try to, they'll try to find whether, on your residential property, for example, uh, they'll try to find something as similar to yours as possible and as close to you as possible...
Right.
In terms of current sales. And that's how they, how they start with their process. And then, and then they'll take, then they even take into consideration, well, boy, did, does, did her house have a finished basement compared to the other one? They, so they get into an awful lot of things that determine that.
So it's not necessarily that between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, my house went up fifty thousand dollars. It's, that's how lo- are they just catching up?
Yes, and that's...
Is that what we're kinda saying, that you...
Yeah, you, you should not see that fifty thousand again next year as an increase.
Well, shouldn't there be some kinda process to regularly upgrade it, and so, so you don't see this huge...
Yeah, but, but, but part of what, part of what you do get every March is your proposed increase. And that, and that's, you know, each and every one of us, I, I'm also a taxpayer, too, and I own property in the city of Morehead, where I live. And I also have to look at mine, just like you do. And if I don't like my valuation increase, I, I have the same processes you have to go to do.
I'm okay with the number, because that is a marketable number.
Yeah, but you do get that, you do get that notice every year. So every year, every, every landowner, every property...
Yeah, but it doesn't matter when I get the notice. The question is, why in one year did you decide to make that huge difference?
And, and so when you get that and you have your fifty thousand dollar deal, it came up in March, and you wanna know why, that's what you do. You follow this process, you go to that meeting.
So you're saying, as a county board, you have nothing to do with deciding increases, they should happen and they shouldn't happen?
We don't see those.
Okay.
We, we don't, we don't see those, because that, that is the, uh, the assessor has to be within the range that we talked about.
Quite frankly, when we hear about them, that's kind of, I mean, in the last couple of weeks, my phone's been ringing like crazy because I had a huge increase, my neighbors all, we all, you all had increases. And when you start calling us and letting us know, that's where we start saying, wait a second, why, where are the increases coming from? We, and unless people follow that process in March and start letting us know, we have no control over that valuation, and I, I mean, we can't control what it is. And I think, too, you said earlier, it's important to ask who's around you, what those comparable sales are, because if there hasn't been a comparable sales, you know, is it somewhere that maybe it doesn't make sense? And I, so even though it may seem like the process is shut for this year, which technically we can't do anything about your valuation now, you can still ask the important questions, and then maybe in March, when you get that, we'll double check to make sure that there are no enormous increases, because that's not sustainable or fair.
So the assessor's office runs this whole thing. You guys don't really have anything to do with it until you hear about.
That's...
So the question is, who, who determines the assessor's ability to just decide to jump like that? I mean, not that their numbers aren't fair, I'm not questioning that so much, but why they did it all at once.
A lot of it had to do with this new software, and then...
But where's the warning?
Yeah, I...
No.
You worked for us. Where's the warning?
But your, but your, your warning comes out in March.
I know.
Every year.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if I may, I think she's got a very valid point. I mean, a huge jump like that, and, and, and you guys do have input into that, and, and, and it flows through me, and I'll talk to the assessor, and we will talk about, this was too big of an increase, and we gotta try and smoothen that out the best we can. And, and that's what we'll, we'll try to do, working with you folks.
I mean, if you saw your property values running at eighty percent, and you knew it had to go up to fulfill your mandate, then that's where you could say, okay, but maybe we can't make our citizens do it all at once. Maybe we need to inform our citizens, maybe...
And, and that does happen, because the state does come in and audit us quarterly, and it'll look at every township, and they'll say, "You're light over here," you, and they'll come out, actually, in fact, they did that last year to a segment of ours. They said, "You have to raise these valuations because you're under the ninety percent. You have to be within ninety and a hundred and five percent." So they, not only is it our assessor's office that works for these groups that, that, but they do their work every day, and, you know, it's pretty hard for them to track, but then the state is monitoring that flow. So yes, i- i- it's a combination, so we can have a little influence on that, and we'll try to do that. I, I, I think that's what they're trying, what they're saying, so, um, thank you.
The question is, you're under ninety percent, and you have to be between ninety, you're under ninety percent for market value. You have to be between ninety to a hundred and five, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, what was the percent you raised it to? Was it a hundred and five, was it a hundred, was it ninety-five? What was, what did you raise it from to?
Yeah.
From, to, what you, how much did you raise it? You raised it fifteen percent? Or was it the nine and a half?
I, I, I think they still try to go to comparable based on sales. They still have to try to use that in...
Is that a house, is that a house by house situation? You know, like you said, uh, it wasn't a, is it a section by section, your marketable value?
Yep, that's a very, very valid question. How does that? And it depends upon the area. If it's farmland that's down on that, it may, they all may get a seven percent increase to, to, and so that bring it from eighty-seven to, you know, uh, seven percent would be ninety-four, and that's what the assessor's office works with. And then they work that out with the state. They say, okay, uh, what, what can we do here to bring it into compliance?
So, yeah, so, uh, you're with the assessor, assessor office, right?
No, I'm not.
Okay, sorry, I sounded like you were...
It sounds like the assessor's office is an offer meeting.
No, but I, I work for these folks, and I work with the assessor's office. If, if there's something that can be done, just what she's talking about, maybe a notification could be out. Maybe we could be a little tender in doing that increase, and they'll say, well, yes, but we were... And then we find out the reasons why that big jump took place and try and smoothen that out. So, uh, yes, that, we all, I'd like to say work together on this. And that's why this is your night, and also in June, to come in and talk to these people as to how to do things and how to smoothen those out.
This is, you know, like, I'm not an existing homeowner in this area, I'm a new owner, you know, homeowner, and I'm just, just starting, I just get this in the mail, and I'll say, I, I, uh, this is, you know, easy solid, solid tax from you before. Like, okay, no, or something, oh, it's like, five, ten dollars, so...
Yeah.
So that's all, and all here to talk and discuss.
So, Brian, I know Commissioner Haney wanted to...
I just wanted to, uh, hopefully provide a little bit of perspective. I'm Jim Haney, I'm the District One Commissioner here, which is the middle of Morehead, in the east side specifically. I own Haney's Photography at sixteen-ten, we have it in Morehead. From two thousand to two thousand and ten, the valuation on our property didn't increase at all. And that was a welcome thing. Unfortunately, in two thousand and ten, um, this, the city assessors assessed one-fourth of the commercial property in the city of Morehead each year. They began doing it that year, and those of us on the east end of town, uh, like Kovash Marine, myself, mine went up ninety-six percent in one year, my valuation. And Kovash was the leader, his went up a hundred and eight percent in one year, okay? Now, since then, of course, it's leveled out, but they were making up for ten years of not, um, increasing it or keeping it competitive. And I'm assuming that this was at the behest of the state of Minnesota, trying to get into that ninety to one hundred and five percent criteria. So, just to give you a little perspective, what's happened in this? So, but, you know, that doesn't mean my taxes went up all that much. I mean, they did, they, they almost doubled, but, um, they've since then stabilized.
Well, is it, you know, as the, uh, the assessors, the individual in charge of creating the, the, uh, singular calendar to assess properties on a regular, routine basis, are they still in charge from two thousand to two thousand and ten? Is that still the same person that's still, like, overseeing this? Because it is, they need to go and get someone that's more ready to get better.
That's Morehead.
That was the city.
That's the city of Morehead.
That was not Clay County.
That, that was the city, that, that was the city of Morehead, it's, that's, yeah, that was not our, not county.
No, that's, that's wrong, that's completely wrong.
Well, uh, you know...
But they have been flat for all those years.
Yeah.
And then, I think right now they're on a four-year schedule, I believe, aren't they, where they assess every commercial property in the city of Morehead every four years?
You know, I, I thought, I thought seeing your valuation increases of forty or fifty percent was also insane. I, I just wanna say that, I, I agree with you. Uh, we will, we will take, we will take your comments and suggestions and, and work through our administrator and the assessor's office in the future to try to, uh, see if we can't see this coming sooner for you and provide that potential warning for you. And that, that's, I guess that's...
I'll let them talk to you.
Yeah, that's the promise that we can...
We'll see you again.
Try to give, yeah, yeah, all right, well...
That's good. Hopefully you won't want it.
You...
What's that?
Hopefully you won't want to see it.
Yeah. But you, I'm glad you should, I'm still glad you have questions on the budget. I, I think it's important that all of you, um, understand what we're doing and come and chew us out if you think we're not doing it right. Uh, I, you know, I appreciate your comments that, uh, uh, when it comes to, you think we're doing fairly well with the money we're spending. And I thank you for that. We're always, we're always under the gun by somebody to either spend too much or not enough, so...
Well, I understand that you have to increase, um, you know, every year.
Sure.
But I, I, I really wish that...
There was the batteries, though, what we can do to cut it back so that the, if you assess our property at two hundred thousand dollars, that the rate at which you tax it has to come down. And that's now, so because I missed last year's meeting, I'm early for next year's meeting. That's the good news, right? So this can be the meeting for next year. So, when this year, when you get proposed new software, and you will, because software goes to hell right away, and they can't, they won't support it anymore, right? So, can we look at this software, because before they tax us out of our homes, that we can do something about it? Because it's really cold to live in your car this time of the year, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. Summer ain't bad, but didn't the winter, it sucked.
I, I don't, I don't mean to laugh, because you were, you were right, it's...
Yeah, and I mean, not putting the blame on all you, but as a team, there's something you gotta do different. You just do, because we're headed in the wrong direction. If you wind the clock ten years ahead, I'll be, I, I would like to retire someday. I've been thinking about it for years, and I'm getting closer. But you're just putting it that much farther out of reach for me. I mean, now, I can retire, but I just, I have a house. And that isn't right, and so we gotta do something. You know, I look at this social services thing here for eight million dollars. Can we trim that at all? Or let's do this, let's provide, we provide an option for, for the people who wanna support more social services can pay out of their pocket, and the ones that don't, don't have to support it, maybe we could trim there a little bit. Would that work?
Well, we, we have to, we have to see what guidelines we have. Again, we talked about mandated stuff. Some of the stuff, when it gets into those areas, it's mandated by the state.
But you know, sometimes you just make your own mandates, and the people who don't like them will come knocking, you know? So if we just do it...
Well, we don't, we don't make our own mandates, or...
We don't, huh?
No, not, not at, not at the county level, we don't. No, not, not at, not at the county level, we don't.
Sure. Whose permission do you need to make them? To make your own mandates on what you spend where?
The state mandated.
The state does.
There, there's, there's portions of our budget, we, uh, we're not mandated to spend a nickel on, on our roads and bridges.
Right.
We're not mandated to spend a nickel.
Really?
But if we cut that, uh, how happy are you gonna be?
That would be bad, right? I agree.
So, so those are, uh, you know, uh, we're not mandated on certain, uh, law enforcement functions. We are mandated on everything with the Department of Corrections when it comes to our correctional facilities and those types of things. We're mandated on how many, how many staff we have to have for inmates and all those things. Uh, but we're not mandated to have a deputy out in your area all the time.
Right.
But I think you'd be disappointed if you didn't have one out there.
Well, that's a whole other story.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public, uh, or?
Mr. Chair, we did receive one letter. Would you want us just to put that in the file, or would you want that presented? Would you like to read it in for the record, or?
Um. Yeah, we can, we can just submit it, uh, in as part of, but we do want, we, can you make copies of it for all the board members?
Absolutely.
I don't know if everybody wants to sit and listen to it being read, but, uh, and we can just submit it as part of the.
Okay, we'll do it that way, thank you. Mr. Chair.
But, yeah, just to provide a copy, it's Commissioner and their in-class, please. All right. And if you, if you can even do it electronically, we'll save pennies.
Okay.
All right, do we have any, uh, anybody else who cares to comment? Seeing none, our board meeting will be adjourned.